Yeah, first, will you give the information to Mary so that she can get, so we can get the, uh...
Right.
You don't have to have it right now.
I'll bring it next week. That's fine. I don't have the case in it.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right. Next on the list. We have Darrell Baker, the County Court tire Ryan McKinney and Robert Carter on September, on April the 7th, 2014, has requested county commission to backdate their employment. Of course, I spoke with the county prosecutor on this matter, and he said that these people would need to be paid. So it was, I think it was his recommendation that we take some form of action so that these people could be paid.
I'll make the motion based upon the prosecutor's recommendation, we go ahead and pay this to us.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, no. That being a two to one vote, the ayes have. Moving on to the second.
This is to backdate the employment from April 7th.
I'm gonna make a motion, I was gonna wait for the next, but there needs to be a motion in regards to this, that according to the prosecutor, the report I saw that he gave us, he recommended that the commission send, basically his recommendations, to the elected officials as far as his evaluation of what personnel policy and code would allow us to do, so somewhere along this line, and we can include a copy of what he sent us if it's okay.
I'll actually read what he sent us. He asked us to send us West Virginia State Code, which was 7-7-7, which states the county assistance deputies and employees, their number and compensation county budget. The county clerk, county, the circuit clerk, sheriff, county assessor, possibly attorney by, and with the advice and consent of the county commission, may appoint an employee to assist them in the discharge, discharge of their official duties for and during their respective terms, assistance deputies and employees. And also under Personnel Policy, Section 1, Employee Selection Qualifications, 3, set forth the process of presenting, presenting a prospective employee for approval of the county commission. Upon presentation before the county commission for approval of prospective employee by a county official for the purpose of hiring said prospective employee. So the, I think what Doc Vance is saying is that we send letters to each county official stating that if there is any hiring that needs to be done, that this is the, before the county commission, before hiring, before there is any action taken to hire employees. So what we will need to do is, this would backdate their employment from April 7th, when you did hire them? And I would say that it would backdate it to the present. Are they still employed?
Usually we hire a couple people for the election cycle to help carry out machines. And this, this instance was for the repair with ESMS, which ultimately it saved us five or $6,000 to have those guys changing the lights, as opposed to technicians.
I understand, but I don't think that's the issue of what they were doing. I think the issue is, is bringing if there is someone to be hired, to bring him before the county commission. And of course, at that particular point, you could give the explanation as to what it is that they're gonna do, and I think that that's in code.
With, with the, is that, does that count for like the contracted services?
Of course. Anyone that is hired by the county clerk, the circuit clerk, sheriff, the sheriff is gonna hire someone as a contracted service. It has to be...
Even if it's for like one day employment?
Yes. It has to be brought before the county commission, because we are co-employers with you. That's the statute, and then that is the personnel policies.
Possibly with respects to the elections, then would that be okay if I start submitting all this with the poll order list?
Of course. That, well, that means that.
Yes.
That's how, that's how it has to work. The, the next is the overtime issue. We have an employee that turned in 15.5 hours overtime. They wore 2.5 hours at an hourly rate obtaining their 40 hours. Then the next 13 hours would be an overtime hour. After reviewing the timesheets, they clocked in at a reg, clocked in at the regularly, regularly, I think it is, with 7.5 hour days, except for on the 3/24, when they worked from 9:00 to 6:00, which is 1.5 hours over. On 3/27, they worked from 9:00 to 5:00, which is 4, which is .5 hours. I questioned the 13.5 remaining hours, because the hours did not match up with the records set by the time clock. After questioning, I was told the employee worked these particular overtime hours from their house. Mary was told that the employee worked on e-poll books and washing aprons from their house for 13.5 hours. I would, I would like to repeat that the county clerk office has a time clock. The employees use the time clock to record and verify their time daily. And the hangup that I have with this is that allowing people to go home and work, there is no way to accurately verify their time. So, um, and according to the personnel policy, on the issue of overtime in our personnel policies, Page 7, Section C, Type Compensatory Time and Overtime, Subsection 2, a county official shall notify the county commission in terms of necessity and manner of compensation for said overtime work, whether it is to the compensatory time or overtime pay. Based on this language, we don't necessarily have to adopt a policy, but we probably need to give a reminder to the, the local leaders, the local officials, calling their attention to this provision, that no overtime work is to be scheduled without consulting the county commission ahead of time. So, the, oh, go ahead. I think the, I spoke with the prosecutor on this, and I feel like, he feels like that moving forward, he feels like that is his recommendation to go ahead and play, pay the employee the 13.5 hours overtime, but send a letter to the county official stating that if there is overtime to be worked, that according to the policies, that it needs to come before the county commission before there is any...
What I think in, in talking with the elected official in this matter, he understands, as I understand, you know, we, we, I need to make sure that people that are getting overtime, I think needs to spend the overtime here or in the elections room or something, or not people at home. There's, there's no checks and balances there. You don't know what they did when they went home, and, and I'm not saying the person didn't do the work they said they'd done.
Right.
But it, as, as we talked, I think it, and, and we had this last year with, with one of the people that works with us, and I basically said, I feel that, you know, things like that need to be done, that should be done on the time you clock in. You should, you know, if you have to take those somewhere and do things with them, they should be clocked in and out, and, and I think that we're all agree with that. And I think what really just needs to be done, as the president said, is to just go ahead and send a reminder note to the elected officials, so they can understand that that's the way we're, we're gonna conduct business, and, and to make sure that they're in compliance with that.
So is there a recommendation, the prosecutor actually recommended to pay the employee 13.5 hours?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, no?
I've got another question, so I'm sorry. Uh, we don't have another commission meeting, and I'm gonna have to have some overtime done in the coming down on the next commission meeting.
What, what do I need to get there? I think the best way to do that, and we have addressed this previously with other elected officials, what most elected officials do is that if there is something that has to be done, something immediately that has to be done, they send an email correspondence to each commissioner separately, asking, stating their case, stating their need, and say, listen, we can't make it to the next agenda, but if you will approve this, and you get two people to approve it, then I think that that would be, that would be uniform.
Well, I'm even okay if, as long as the president would know that, you know, that, that he was willing to require help, or somebody was willing to require help. Sometimes it'd be hard to, you know, to get him back to him in time.
If you send a notice out, it'd be good to notify all three commissioners.
Of course.
But if the person, the, the elected official had money in their budget, and I think it wouldn't be our responsibility to tell them when and how they can use that money. I think all they need to tell is, is their opinion as the elected official. They need help, they need emergency help, overtime help. Let us know that, and then ratify it for the next meeting, but I think in some way you gotta give flexibility.
Well, I, I think this does a pice of...
You have a kid, boy.
Yeah, you know, I, I know, we were just looking at the schedule of the times, we do things of that nature, and, and I think that's, you know, you know, basically, having, having dealt with some of these things before, reading about how they've been dealt with, you know, the thing I would ask when it dropped before the hiring was, is he, does he have the money in his budget?
Of course.
You know, and, and I think as long as that does, and he notifies us, then we're okay. I, I think the thing, you know, I know, I've got several requests from Mr. Brumfield concerning time and things like that, and that's the way he approaches notifying officials.
And you respect that elected official.
And, and that's the way I would feel more comfortable with it. That way, you know, no one can come and say, well, you know, somebody's getting this versus this, we all know. And I think, I think that's a good idea, is just go ahead and notify us, and then we can go ahead and take care of it.
And I was gonna, you know, one thing that I'd like to state is that more information is best. You know, whenever you say, hey, listen, you know, this is what's going on, and it allows everyone to understand what it is that you're doing, what it is that, hey, listen, you know, I'm gonna need 20 hours overtime because my, my officers are, you know, they're patrolling the streets this week, and, you know, if they get, you know, they run into somebody and there's gonna be, you know, they're gonna be working over, then we're gonna need this overtime to, to pay them. And, and that might be something that we wanna look at in the future. But according to our policies, and I think it's best to follow policy, and if you follow your policy, you're consistent with that. Um, we have a question in the audience.
Did I misunderstand, were they overtime work on the poll books?
E-poll. I have, oh, e-poll books is what it was called.
Or is it legal to take those home?
I have no idea. It's the, it's the software.
Oh, it's...
Just the software for the e-poll books. The actual voter rolls wouldn't be downloaded till later. I don't know. But anyway, was there a, did we approve this? Was there a motion?
It was a two to one vote.
It was a two to one vote, all right. The next, we, a source that says, adopt the policy. We do not have to adopt the policy, because we already have a policy.
You're sending a letter.
Yeah, I'm sending a letter to all the elected officials. The next is, I put this on there, to adopt the policy stating that all positions hired by or through the county commission must be locally advertised. I think that this should be something that, I know that we have talked to a lot of the elected officials, and I think most elected officials have decided, hey, this is good policy, I can, you know, let people in our communities know that there is gonna be a position open, and it allows everyone in the county, if you're reading this, and you're looking at the Help Wanted section, maybe you need a job. And it would be great that if we would go ahead and stick this in policy and say, hey, listen, you know, as a, an elected official, you know, I'm, I need, let's say, I need a, an assessor, a new assessor, you know, instead of, no, I mean, I'm talking, a deputy assessor, some help. Then what we do is we advertise that, instead of just going out and hiring on our own.
I think that would be okay if it was legal for us to do it. Whereas there, there are some case law that shows, I think that if, I mean, he's, if a particular official has the money in his budget for a particular position, there's nothing says he has to advertise it, I don't know. So I wouldn't care, and I understand the reason you wanna do that, and I support that reason.
Look, I will say, through my PBC fund, which is a different fund than from the county commission, if I hire an employee out of that budget, which that has to be approved by the PBC commission, it's mandatory that I advertise that for two weeks, and I have to show proof that I did that. So I don't know if that is...
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I, there's different, we might, and I have no problem supporting this and making a motion to do this with the okay of the prosecutor saying it's a legal thing to do, because...
Yeah, 'cause I think we looked one time for, for the sheriff's department, if it had to run two weeks, or if you had to, remember, you had, you tried to hire somebody quickly, and I think Graham found something that was an emergency hire, or you either kind of advertised it for a week or something, you know, it was a little...
I was feeling that'd be very bad, first.
That's civil service, that would be out.
Yeah, but I, I'm just concerned, and like I say, I'm just concerned if, if, if the prosecutors say it's, we're, it's well within our ability to do that, then I'd want to do that, but if he says that, you know, if somebody needs something, that we don't have to say something, 'cause I, I do know, have reviewed case law, and so once it, once it goes into these departments, it's part of the commission, we're totally able to handle the money.
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking that. What I'm asking is, since we are co-employers, you know, we are co-employers, and if there is any type of employment that's done, you know, the commission has to put their stamp of approval on it and say, hey, listen, these are the different, these are, this is a, a policy, this is what we want to see happen, and...
I think still, we should ask prosecutor even on that, I think there's, there's some court case where the county commissions have been overruled with those elected officials and had them dispersed.
Right. Well, it's, uh, well, I'll tell you what, let's, uh, let's send it to the prosecutor, just table it to the next meeting, send it to the prosecutor.
How about, how about I just go ahead and make a motion, we send this to him and ask him his legal opinion, the way that we can do this.
All right, let's do that. There's a motion on the floor.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
There's a second? All, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
If we end up doing that, we should put it on the webpage.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have, yeah.
And any law that we can...
Oh, so, uh, the ayes have.
Yeah, I'm, the, pay the overtime, I, I missed the, the motion to, uh...
I made this for the first, the second, and the vote was a K, A, and no, and two were...
I, I just sent.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
All right, the next, the next is, uh, I don't know, it's, I don't know, it's gonna come up, uh, uh, there is a, come to a resolution for the exuberant amount of overtime, or the exuberant amount of compensatory time accumulated to employees' product 2013. This has been ongoing with a, you know, you had to deal with this, and I've had to deal with it, dealt, I've dealt with it. I sent this to the prosecutor, the prosecutor said he spent 25 hours going through law, federal, state, our personnel policies, and he came up with, um, his recommendation basically was to pay the compensatory. That was his recommendation, I think it's in there, you can read it if you'd like. Is there a motion to do that?
I believe you want the prosecutor to recommend...
I'll say that.
There is a second. Any discussion? All those...
No, I, I, just a little discussion is, you know, I mean, having dealt with this a while for the last year, so, you know, it's, it's a real complicated issue, and I think it does need to be resolved. I'm not entirely agreeing, agreeing with what the prosecutor says, how to do it, but I do think it gets it resolved, and it's a legal way to get it resolved, so that's phenomenal.
And the problem is, is we need the commission, all elected officials, seen it up here tonight, what we keep hearing is, if you permit an employee to be engaged in their job, you're gonna pay it. So we need to talk within all elected officials, and try to be more efficient how they run their office.
Of course, and, and this doesn't mean we, we pay people for that's already took their comp time since then, if they, you know, if they've been paid for it.
No, this is, yeah, this is, this is to wipe the compensatory time off the books. This would...
But now they'll have to get permission ahead of time according to...
Yeah, I mean, we've been following policy since February of 2010? Yes, we started wiping, whenever, Eric, did you have...
Ask her.
Yeah, 'cause I, is it to wipe it clear, or to pay over the 240 or 480?
Uh, the, well, his recommendation was to, we could pay, if, if there were people who had, you know, because state law basically says, and our personnel policies, that you could accumulate, if you are a non-safety employee, that you could accumulate 240 hours of compensatory time. If you are a, a deputy, or if you were serving in, you know, public service as far as the safety, that you could have 480 hours of compensatory time. Now, he said we could do it either of two ways. We could actually pay, let's say that we had somebody who was non-safety, that had 350 compensatory hours, he said we could pay down to 240 hours, and then require them to take this time, or he said that we could go ahead and pay it and be done with it. And I, um, I was basically, if we would, you know, to go ahead and pay it and be done with it. Yeah.
So, so no one would have compensatory hours, and then all smart men would...
It would be a clean slate, if you did that. And I was thinking that that was what, you know, would take care, and I think it would remedy the situation at hand. It's expensive, but it's part of...
If you guys wanna go that way, I'll go that way. I would have, I would have probably went the other way and brought them down to 240 and said, okay, you need to take some time off.
Well, I mean, it's solely up to you. I mean, it's whatever the motion says.
I think that's fine, I think either way...
Well, it seemed like it'd be harder in some offices.
To operate and things like that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I was, um, now, there was a discussion, all right, I have something I would like to add. Whenever I was elected as the county commission, came into the position, view, with the view that we operated by statute, upon review of the state code personnel policy, it was obvious that our employees, you know, were misled as to how to approve compensatory time, and I want to emphasize that that was through no fault of the employee. While I have no doubt that they were, as to how employees were told to approve compensatory time, it's still my contention that it's our job as county commissioners, and of course, our policy rules and regulations. And I have tangled with this issue and this decision for a long time, and actually working with the prosecutor. I know he has made a recommendation, but, but I am allowed to disagree with that recommendation. I realize that there were certain individuals who used integrity while accruing comp time. However, all those, I also realized based on exuberant hours and, and the context of said work, and the lack of proper paper trail and validation of the work, that the system of compensatory time prior to January 1st, 2001 was abused. And that's, that's all I have to say. Now, is there a motion?
I'll move, we go ahead and accept the recommendations of the prosecutor as far as the remaining, or as far as paying the, the comp time.
Is there a second?
Second. I thought we'd already done that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, well, it was, it was for the, for the total amount, okay? There was a motion, a second, no further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed? No? All right.
So, can I...
So the motion carries.
Who made the motion? 'Cause I had Mr. McCann...
It was Doc Vance.
Well, Mr. McCann made it a moment ago.
Well, so we had to, we had to make sure that we knew whether it was gonna be to pay it full, or to pay it a little bit of the time, and then make the employees take the comp.
Okay.
All right, so we had to...
So you go know on that.
I did, I, I just sent.
What's the total cost?
Fourteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars.
All right. Now we're on to unfinished business.
No, just a second. Okay, okay, just a second. We wanna make sure we follow the comp time rules from now on. I mean, and I, I know we, we have been since last year, but make sure that every, you know, that all the office holders, yes...
Oh, we're gonna still, we're gonna, can we let the comp time begin, or...
No. The, what, no, the way, no, 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 the way, the way comp time works, and this is with, and this is in policy, this is our policy, if there is anything that you feel like that we need to address, where, which is above and beyond the call of duty, you know, you submit a letter to the county commission, we will approve that or not approve that, but once it is approved, that goes into their personnel file, and it's kept for a year, because the employee has a year, they have a year to use...
From that point on, from, they've got a year from the time they, they cure this comp time.
That's, well, whenever it was approved.
If approved.
If it's approved. And that's, that's it.
There's no way that, that I can hold back.
Well, that's the policy.
I know it is. Just like this man right here, right here at 4 o'clock, and he comes up on a wreck.
Well, I think that's whenever we get into overtime.
Okay.
See, that, that's, that's...
Yeah, well, that's what you...
That, that's, that's when we get into the fact where, just like I was saying, you know, you have a wreck, you have this guy working patrol, listen, I'm gonna need, you know, 40 hours this week, or I'm gonna need 15 hours, because that's what I foresee.
Right.
And then, if that doesn't do you, then that's whenever you make a communication to the county commission and say, hey, listen, you know, I'm gonna need some overtime...
Well, what you were saying, comp time is something that we're gonna foresee, right?
Yeah, that has to be the case.
But anything that, it's like, he come up on a wreck at 4 o'clock, and he spends 2 hours, that's over.
That's, yeah, yeah.
Well, maybe it's a case where the budget starts getting thin.
Yes.
And you couldn't pay overtime. Then you approach the commission and say, I've gotta have some runway with comp time.
Uh, we're on unfinished business.
Okay, one more question, I apologize. The 15,000, how many employees might that be? Is there an average?
Can we get that after the meeting?
Okay.
I mean, you know...
14 employees.
14 employ, 1,000 each roughly, or some?
No, it varies so much. I don't think there's any...
I bet it does, okay.
There's no...
I agree, and Harvey Sykes probably top one talked to him.
Well, we can, I mean, that's, that's, that's personnel issue, I mean, a personnel matter, we probably, we can't discuss that.
I know you can, I've been here a lot, and...
Well, there's been, you know, there's a lot of...
They're seniority.
Yeah, they have a lot. Uh, seniority.
The comp time, the deputies don't have that name.
Well, but we, we can't necessarily talk about specific cases because of, it's a personnel issue.
But we talked about washing aprons a few minutes ago.
Well, I understand that, but we didn't say anybody's name.
But it's pretty clear who it is.
I don't think so.
I beg to differ. Go on.
I will make the comment, I will make the comment.
Okay.
Last year, you know, I had someone going home washing stuff, and I said you need to do it on the clock. So, I mean, but, but the particular person in this case, the elected official didn't know that's the way I handled it the last time, so, you know, it, it, it gets, you know, like we say, we're just trying to make things more accountable, things of that nature, and, and work at it from a generative view, not who this person is or that person is.
All right. The next issue is unfinished business possible action, Maureen Holton, regarding a 15,000 matching grant. We have received project goals for the Solid Waste Authority, we've received copies of the board members.
Yes, we have. It's a great big pack, I didn't bring it towards, 'cause it was a lot. She's, she's given me more than you asked for.
Oh, I'm glad, I'm sorry, I missed that, I hadn't noticed here, I, we're not on for this business.
Okay.
We are actually still in, I just, I skipped over that. We're, we're still in discussion of concerns of possible action, yes. Sorry about that. It is to accept the Tri River Transit Repayment Plan as submitted by Paul Smith.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? All opposed? That being unanimous, the ayes have. Now, I guess we're in unfinished business possible action, and we're with Maureen Holton, regarding 15,000 dollar matching grant.
Okay. After you, you pay their comp time, their compensation, or whatever, there goes that 15,000 dollars. Good idea.
We've been, I think we've kinda held back a little bit, I think we've kinda, we've been, you know, kinda foresee things. Go ahead.
I'm just here to actually see what your decision is, if you want to proceed with this. I have 15,000 dollars. It isn't definite that I have it. I send this in by the end of the month, and I won't know anything until July. I spoke with a representative from the West Virginia Solid Waste Management Board, and she did mention that if you see that this is what your county really needs, other than use it for recycling purposes, then you have to state that in your application, and she's, off the record, 99.9 percent, we would get it. So...
Sean should turn it off.
I didn't hit all that. We're sorry.
Off the record, but anyway...
But the money would not be available to the first part of August. I'm asking, do you want me to wait till we get our money to start this cleanup?
This is the cleanups, right?
Yes, the community cleanups throughout Lincoln County. Yes, the community cleanups throughout Lincoln County.
We used to do that in the spring, don't we?
We start in the spring, because.
I think we need to get on it.
Yeah, for the leaves, we can.
So is there, is there a motion to approve the fifteen thousand dollar something matching?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? That being unanimous, the ayes have it. Now we're into new business.
One thing I'll say to you, I will submit to you quarterly reports like I do with the grant reports that I submit to the solid waste management board to let you know how I'm spending the money.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Alright, you all seen the new business, is there anything that you see in the new